I call the meeting to order City of University Heights City Council meeting today is December 10th, 2024. All five council are present. First order of business approval of minutes November 12th. Mike circulated them. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Any comments from the public? Pat, would you like to say anything today? Thank you for coming. Is anybody, did you hear from anybody?
I did not.
Okay, thank you. And then I want to introduce our fire chief, Iowa City Fire Chief Scott Lyon is back to give an end of year report. Thank you, Chief, for coming.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me, Mayor Council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. As the mayor said, I am Scott Lyon, Iowa City Fire Department Fire Chief. I think I recognize everyone from last year, unless anybody's new.
Yeah?
Just as a reminder, from what I can tell, our relationship began in 2016 for the Iowa City Fire Department, working under contract for the city of University Heights. Seems to be going pretty well. Looks like as we go back and we talked about the Iowa City Fire Department, just as a refresher, we're in all hazards fire department. Being that not only do we do fire suppression, emergency medical response as a first responder is part of our key mission. Confined space rescue, trench rescue, bi-angled rescue, hazmat technician level stuff. So we got all kinds of fun stuff going on that we're, we're able to provide the citizens of University Heights. The department's managed by myself, a deputy fire chief, who's the number two person in the organization that runs much of the day-to-day functions. Each shift is supervised by a battalion chief. That is the on scene incident commander and ship supervisor in 16 firefighters, three captains, and a number of lieutenants as well. So we're able to offer quite the service. And I'm very proud of where we're at. This last year, the Iowa City Fire Department was once again re-accredited. We're an internationally accredited fire department, have been since 2008. We are probably one of about 30 worldwide that have maintained accreditation for that long. So I think you're getting a good value for the service that you're receiving. As we look at this year in 2024, my numbers are up to December 1st, so I apologize, we're a little bit shy on a few of these. But the citizens here in University Heights had 54 responses about the Iowa City Fire Department this last year. Of those 31 were medical emergencies of some type. And those can vary from something very basic to something that's very, very critical. And again, we are first responder Johnson County ambulance. We do not transport. There was one chemical spill, at least one down power line, nine public assists. So that's when somebody calls in, it needs a non-emergency response for something. Could be a smoke detector battery change, could be off the floor, it could be a variety of things. And we do that quite routinely throughout our city. We were canceled en route one time, no incident found, four times. So someone calls 911, says they see smoke in the area, something like that. And we don't find anything, which is a good day for everyone. And then seven false alarms. So not, not too many of those, certainly a manageable breakdown. So far this year, our busiest months have been January of last year with eight responses. And then October of this year with another eight responses. And we kind of have a little lull in early spring, things kind of calm down a little bit. And which is pretty similar to, to what we experienced in the city of Iowa City. When it comes to performance, we benchmark everything that we do, the Iowa City Fire Department. We like to use the 90th percentile. So the 50th percentile, if we talk averages, it's just in the middle. Half the people get this, half the people get that. We find that to be a not real important indicator of our performance. We use a 90th percentile. So nine out of 10 times, what can the customer expect from your fire department? Our turnout time from asleep in bed to wheels turning is a minute 57 seconds, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our travel time within the community here is five minutes and 56 seconds, 90% of the time, so nine out of 10. And then the total response equals seven minutes and four seconds, 90% of the time. So that's the level of service that your citizens, that our citizens can expect. We don't differentiate between who the citizens belong to. All we do is we call for help, we show up, we provide the help, and then we go back to the service. We do attend a variety of pub events throughout the city of University Heights. Down here at the bookshop on the corner, further down the plaza here, in a variety of other locations, and we enjoy doing that and we're glad to serve. So that's just a real wave top of the last year. Or at least year to date. I'm more than happy to answer any question, or at least come up with a creative answer.
I heard because of your high ranking and that it lowers our insurance rate.
Yeah, so there's a rank, it's an ISO ranking, it's a scoring. Right now, we're under review right now. And hopefully we'll be able to drop our number down. It's tough in the urban environment to get those lower, those numbers lowered. It just really comes down to more people, more fire stations. And as we all know, with the financial constraints that we're all facing, that can be a little bit challenging.
Do you look for gas leaks? Do you have any kind of equipment for gas sniffing or anything?
We do. We were on significant gas leak just last night in downtown Iowa City. So we have a full array of monitoring equipment. The fire station that's closest to University Heights here down, down the road here at Station Two is actually the hazardous materials station. In that building is a specialized response vehicle that has about anything you could have managed to imagine to handle, chemicals, gases, leaks of various types. Everyone that works at that fire station is a hazardous materials technician, so they're the absolute highest level trained that it can possibly be. So, so yes, we actively stiff out natural gas leaks, it seems like.
Do you find the house only or outside as well?
Oh, we'll do both.
We don't know if they, should you get a good old Mid-American or whatever, outside the house?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely respond to the odor of gas in the area and try to isolate it. We will definitely get Mid-American coming to actually mitigate the problem. But, but many times, just like last night, that seemed like about a third of downtown smelled like natural gas, where the problem is actually very isolated. But the leak was outside, the wind was blowing and all that stuff.
Were they allowing you to look for gas valves to shut off or anything like that, or did you just stand by?
Well, we typically don't manipulate gas valves unless, unless there's a life safety problem. So if, if we find ourselves in a situation where there's an actual gas fed fire, or if we're reaching the lower explosive limit of a gas, we may seek out the valve to shut it off. Other than that, we tend to let well enough alone, if we stay out of the, the magic window of explosiveness, we just kind of let it be and let it dissipate, dissipate into the atmosphere. You bet.
Any other questions?
Well, it's truly our, our pleasure to, to serve the citizens. That's, that's what we're here for. At any point you have any questions, want to come by the firehouse, anything like that, let me know, we'll make it happen.
Where are you usually at?
I am downtown. Yes, I am downtown there off of the Washington and Gilbert. And that is where the headquarters building is.
Well, thank you, Chief, for coming.
Thank you.
Excellent. Appreciate it.
Let's have a happy holiday season.
And go Hawks, yeah.
Go Hawks.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go to Mayor's Report, and I have a couple things. I received a retirement letter from Terry Gert, our building inspector. And it's effective December 31st, 2024, and I thanked him for his many years of service for University Heights. Also, any resident that's interested in serving on a city board, please contact me. It could be the Board of Adjustment. We have a tree board or the zoning commission. So that's the only thing I have today. So then we'll go to legal report, right? Is that the next thing? Yes. Steve?
Thank you. So there's a couple of ordinance considerations. The person is 255, which amends the zoning ordinance in ways that the council has talked about before. And this is a second consideration because we modified things on post-consideration in October. So as I said in my report, nothing's changed since last month. You know, if you want, you can, you could collapse the three into two and adopt this tonight. You don't have to do that, and I'm not pushing for you to at all, but but this really is more like your third consideration, but technically your second. So I don't have anything to add unless anyone has questions. If you want to collapse, make that motion first and then vote on that, and then you'll vote on the ordinance.
What does council think?
I would like to move to suspend it. The requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and vote upon it as a passage to council meetings prior to the meeting at which it's being finally passed.
Okay, that's a motion by staff. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Second by Tim. Discussion. This is a roll call vote.
Gone.
Aye.
Herbal. Aye. Moore.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, now we'll consider ordinance number 255, amending the zoning ordinance. Is there a motion? Motion by Lisa. Is there a second? Second by staff. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Herbal. Aye. Moore. Schroder.
Aye.
Swales. Aye. Gone.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And then you have third consideration of ordinance number 256, which makes violations of most city ordinances and municipal infraction as opposed to a serious, or excuse me, a serious, excuse me, a simple misdemeanor, which is a criminal. Nothing, again, no changes, no any questions, otherwise I think that motion's for that ordinance.
Okay, this is third consideration of ordinance 256. Is there a motion? Motion by Nick. Is there a second? Second by Lisa. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Moore.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Gone.
Aye.
Herbal.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Anything else you want to report on, Steve?
Just that, starting January 1, the local options service and sales tax will start to be collected by businesses in the city. It'll be paid by businesses in the normal course of their sales tax remittances to the state of Iowa. And then there'll be this formula that we've talked about that'll determine how much the distribution is to each, each community in the county that has the local option sales tax. And I don't know what that formula will yield, but once we start getting receipts, I think it'll be interesting to the councils will look at, and that'll be coming up first quarter.
Any questions? Okay, any, any questions on Steve's report? Okay, we'll go to city administrator report, and actually he, Troy texted me a report. If he didn't join in, he said, I intended to do a report before I left, but maybe I'd hop, okay. In the past month, I've met with or teleconference with Louise, Stephanie, and Nick. Still needs, I still need to communicate directly with Tim and Doug. As you know, the CAT Z regarding our administrative costs for the derecho has been finalized with FEMA. Not sure John has received the check yet, but it's coming. Exterior door has been repaired, as you obviously see, and there's arrangements are being made to replace the hardware on the interior door. Right over there. And that's his report. So we'll go to the clerks' report. Mike, you sent around a report.
I did. I don't think I have anything else to present, other than just to say we had a baby shower here Sunday. It was the first time we've had the community center rented in a while, and baby shower seems to be our thing. Because this is the fourth one we've had, and we have another one scheduled in March. So it was just a nice, a nice event, and actually somebody who lives in town. And seeing this facility used by its residents is really, I think, should make us all feel good. So, but otherwise, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll go to city treasures report, and we'll go to Costa Rica. How you doing, John?
Pretty good. Calling you from Marchaquita Playa in Puerto Rico. It's a nice, a nice, a nice little cove. I have to say, I had to put on a shirt to attend this meeting, so.
Thank you.
And it's short sleeve, so I don't know what the temperature there is, but here it's very nice. I sent out a updated warrants list earlier today. And there's just one thing to add that Mike brought to my attention. I think Ryan will speak to that later in the engineer's report. Is an invoice from Lynch Escavations for $6,342.90. And I would like to thank Councilor Lisa Moore for her due diligence as normal and overlooking the list of warrants, and she brought to our, to the attention about the association fees that we pay the OUP South condo association. So they raised those fees, and I reached out to them, and they gave me those meeting minutes on how they, and their math on how they came up with the increased fees, and I shared that with Councilor Moore. That's all from Puerto Rico.
Thank you. Are there any other additions to the warrants? Mike, did you get yours?
Just, yeah, that was, you mentioned, John just mentioned it.
Okay, thank you.
So, yep.
Is there any objection to paying the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. And thank you very much, John. We have one more thing where a motion to consider reinvesting Hills Bank CD maturing on 9/21/26. Did you want to say that, talk about that a little bit?
So basically, we, we had a sizable CD that was under auto renewal in 2022. And then auto renewed at 0.85%. And the city's, it's slightly north of $100,000, so the city's going to lose money by leaving it in that current CD. So the proposal for you today is to cash it out. Yes, we'll pay like a $900 something penalty. But we'll fast forward and make that up, and a new temporary, you know, let's say six month CD. And, and then, you know, the city's fine leadership can then forward thinking of where to place that next. So the CD is at Hills Bank, and currently it's just to kill the current CD, move into a temporary six month CD at what time the city can then decide. You know, do they reinvest it with Hills Bank or move to another financial institution? Or something? This is basically a measure to not lose money, you know, keep up with inflation per se.
Any questions for John? Do you have any other comments?
It just seems a dollar out, so I think it makes sense to take a little bit of a hit for the future gain.
You said 0.85?
Yeah.
Right.
And John, what did they say their six month is right now? Three point?
3.6, something, 3.8. Sorry, I'm sitting here with a mobile setup, so.
Yeah, I sent it to you. That's why with the penalty and everything, we'll be two, over $2,000 ahead with the six month one.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, well, we can, we can make two grand, but we'll still lose the 900, but we will, we will more than, more than make up, you know, the penalty plus whatever interest, you know, in six months versus leaving the CD till it turns out in September 26th, so.
Okay, any questions? So we'll, I'll entertain a motion for this. Motion by Nick. Is there a second? Second by Lisa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. Any other questions for John?
The only thing I would say, I don't think those condo association meeting minutes were made part of the record, right? They're not part of the record.
No.
Okay. I mean, there are some inaccuracies in those, so I, but if they're not part of our record.
Nick, would you like me to forward those to you?
I sent you what he said.
Oh, okay. I'll take a look. No, it sounds like I have them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, so we'll go down to the chief's report. Chief, I saw you send a written report.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a few comments.
A couple of, a couple of things that have occurred. Football season is over. Up to this date, we have billed the university for $15,312. We have been reimbursed currently $12,860, so a good majority of it. They go much better this year than they did last. Last year, there was quite a bit of delay in it. We are fully staffed. Matt is on his last day, on his last overnight with Eddie, and then he'll be on his own tomorrow night. So, you know, I'm close enough that he runs into something, he knows how to reach us, but I have full confidence in Eddie. If you took a moment to read the memorandum of understanding, synopsis on it is basically if one officer sees another officer using excessive force, they're obligated to stop. The officer obligated to report it as well. And just as a side note, that didn't make it to the report. The Chuck's Tree on Grand came down without incident. Sidewalk is been pulled up and is sitting alongside. They're waiting to get the appropriate time core. But the tree is gone. No more issues with it. And from my knowledge, it went down without incident.
Well, it took a crane.
Yeah, you know, have you ever watched those?
I, I did for five minutes.
The anxiety or?
Well, I just went, oh my God, that's like a four story crane or something, three, four stories.
Absolutely.
And then he's driving with a steering wheel.
Absolutely.
I know every guy in here would love that. And my two-year-old grandson.
Absolutely. We're not. No. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we'll go on to, Ed, do you have anything, Steph, to add? Okay, we'll go on to finance committee and I think you put this in your report about the transfer of funds.
Yeah, I did. I can.
Resolution 2445.
Yep.
So maybe you want to speak to it.
Yes, I will. So this is, Steve Cool directs this, but what this is, is just, I don't know, I don't know the accounting phrase, but tidying up the books, everything. The council's not approving anything that it hasn't already approved by way of expenditure. It's just moving funds from dollars from one fund to another on an accounting basis to square up our revenue from hotel motel. And I guess balance things out in that way. I mean, I'm very articulate description, but that's how I understand it. We do it, you do it our way.
So consideration 2445 is before the council. Is there a motion? Motion by Nick. Is there a second? Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Gone.
Aye.
Herbal.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Carried five zero.
Thank you. And then Nick, you want to talk about the survey?
Yes. So the survey's been distributed. Thank you, Lisa, Louise, Tim, Deb, Jay, right, Hope Jay. That was really good to get it to everyone, and it sounds like people are taking the survey. But we wanted to put an end date of December 13th, 2024 on it. So that people, if they're on the fence about filling it out, they will go and do that. And that's, yeah, that's the only thing I wanted to report. Just try to get those done, and it'll be interesting to see what people have said and what the experts think that means. So be curious to hear.
Thank you, Nick, for spearheading that. Any questions for Nick? Okay, we'll go to streets and sidewalks, and Ryan, you had a long report.
Yeah, there was probably a lot. With text in there. I'll probably just recap some things briefly. The Melrose Complete Streets project, so I included in my report a the MPO JC analysis of the intersection that was updated in with data that was collected in October. And then, so they've provided us those the peak hour analysis that they've done. It's, okay, thanks, Mike. So the questions that were posed to the MPO were what's our current level of service of this intersection and what's potentially the future situation that we'll be seeing? And then additionally, ask them about dedicated left turn lanes, which was a question that had come up on the north and south legs of the intersection. And then just generally to review our proposed new layout that we've, we had looked at in September, with shifting the intersection and realigning things. And so the level of service is really unchanged since the last report that they've done, and I think it was 2021, the last time they did the peak hour analysis. And so which is good. In fact, I think even some of the traffic counts on Melrose are lower than they were back then. So and then their future condition analysis, which you can see on the, on a table that's in there, on the third page of their report, is, is mostly unchanged from, from the current conditions to 20, their predictions in 2050. So there's not a whole lot of change from what they're modeling right now. Out about 25 years from today, so. Which is good news, right? All good news. And then their, their comments on the proposed layout was that it all looked positive to me, and I would encourage everybody to read through that, just so you're aware of what, what it says in there specifically. But generally speaking, they're noting what we were expecting them to know, which is that the intersection should be safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists altogether by eliminating that one, that one, one-way right turn lane slip lane with that. And then, yeah, and then realigning things to straighten things out and get better visibility and better angles for, for everyone at the intersection, so. So that's that. I don't know if there's any questions anybody had, or if not, tonight, feel free to let me know if you've got any questions as you get time to maybe look at that a little closer.
Maybe I shouldn't ask this until looking a little closer, but did they think that it would improve traffic flow? Like, right now, I know chiefs notice days when, we talked about days when the traffic's way back past Finkbine, you know, or two Finkbine. I just don't know, yeah, on Melrose, and I just don't know if that is intended, like if that will speed it up somehow. I know that's not really, I know the north and south, you know, portions are really probably the bigger change, but
I guess I don't have input from them on whether it was, you're talking the intersection sort of realignment.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know, Chief, do you have any insights on that? We've talked about kind of how, it's been surprising how far back the traffic is in the morning some day.
I would agree on some days, and I'm seeing it less and less frequently. I don't know what's causing it. I don't know whether it's just, it could be scheduling for the university, both patients and employees. I, I don't, I don't know if I have a way of finding out exactly what's going on.
Is that the bottleneck intersection, or is it someplace else?
It bottlenecks, but it also bottlenecks, it gets held up here. I mean, it's just another circumstance.
Does it have anything to do with the construction down at the hub, past the hospital?
I haven't gone down to the hospital seat. I worry about fear here. I haven't gone that far down. I take a look at it in the morning.
I mean, they keep closing one lane and.
Yeah. I mean. Traffic moving east doesn't seem to be affected, but the traffic coming from downtown sure gets backed up lately with that intersection one.
And four, five, four in the afternoon, you know, end up with the stack up going west. Primarily, I notice it in the morning when you Primarily, I notice in the morning, uh, when we, I mean, we've discussed morning, where we're seeing it backed up to. To Finkbine, the commuter or the lot out there. And I don't know what's, what's causing it, whether there is a higher number of, there just haven't been three, so it's just the way, you know. Some doctor's offices schedule a bunch of people at eight o'clock and. And go from there, you know, sort of night after that. I don't know if they're, they're changing their scheduling. I don't know what's creating their model.
Can you show me that slide before traffic counseling? How many were coming down Cozer in the morning? Hundred and six. That seemed like a lot. In the morning.
The hundred and six is the future prediction.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't go far enough.
It's ninety-six.
This.
Now, does that, does that trip that light there at Stella's, if there's somebody at that intersection, how's that work?
Yes.
Does that contribute to a lot of backup on Melrose?
Those are, I can, I can speak, this is a former council member who was on all this and somebody who lives on that street. They have the old in the street magnetic. Trips. So you have to be parked in the right place. When I was on council, MPO said they would expect that Cozer would carry ten percent of the daily traffic. So if you look at the six forty in the AM peak and ninety-six, it's a little over ten percent. You know, that they expect that there are people who are going to think they're going to go faster.
Yeah.
By going around.
But we don't want anybody going down Cozer.
But I will also tell you as a cyclist, the metal magnetic. Trips are terrible. Because I have to walk over and hit the pedestrian walk to be able to, because I'm, I'm one of the thirteen. Or twenty-six up here, you know, but so. I think that realigning that intersection is going to make a big difference. For the people who live in the neighborhood, because it'll be a much easier. And I can tell you that eliminating this piece right here. Where you've got pedestrians crossing and you're going underneath them.
Yeah.
That. That is a big deal. I don't know that it's going to solve. The coming in and going out traffic because that.
Is that going to invite more people?
It's not going to make it anywhere. I think it, I think when we put the lanes on Melrose, it's going to encourage more people to bike in instead and not be sitting. Not be sitting backed up in a car line.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of people getting stuck up here at the, the commuter lot above. And I know that really bogs out a lot of traffic too.
Yeah. I think, I think some of that is just peaks and flows of how traffic, that, how that traffic moves, but I think.
I've never seen the traffic so bad as it had been from Burlington. It's just solid cars, because when I try to get out of ramp four. I literally now have to shoot between cars, turn and go between the hospital buildings, come out the stadium, and then I take a left because. If I sit there on Melrose, I'll die early before I'll be able to get out on Melrose. It's a terrible highway.
That's why we're building more bike, bike lanes, Doug.
On the future plan?
Yeah.
It just seems, won't people want to keep going straight on the sidewalk like they do now? Um, coming from the northwest. Across the parking lot where Stella's parking lot.
Here?
Yeah, seems like there'd be, people would want to just shortcut through there.
That's a curb.
I'm not, not, not in cars.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, good.
Oh, walking across.
Yeah, I would think, yeah, well, and I don't know.
Yeah, and I think.
The way the handicap.
They come in and they're safe.
There is, you mean walkers along here?
Yeah, I would think they'll want to take the shortcut.
Possibly, but you know, the fifteen of us that do it, that live down here, because it's a dead end.
Probably not.
There aren't that many. And I mean, that, uh, I think we talked about that a little bit in September. I think Tim, you might have mentioned something similar and, and. You know, we can talk through that more with Paul Moore too, if he's looking for. A connection, um, that's a little more straight through there, but the intent was that we wouldn't. Invite people necessarily to cut across the parking lot and redirect them to the intersection. And at least encourage them to go to where the signalized intersection is at, um, from. Ultimately, a safety perspective of, we want you to use the push buttons at the signal. And, and then if they're moving that way and they want to cut across the parking lot. You know, you can't, you can't stop them, I guess, really, you know, ultimately is what it comes down to.
Could you build something up there? Put something?
You're talking on the north side of the, the parking lot?
Um.
Driveway?
Where that. Where the paper part in that area, so.
Right there.
I mean, I'm not sure what.
You want something built up there to.
Keep cars in.
To deter pedestrians from cutting across.
Yeah, from cutting across, it alone.
Well, I guess, I, I guess, when Tim's asking, I guess I'm thinking he wants them to go that route, right? Or are you saying?
Well, I'm just saying that they're going to probably cut across there, but it's a few.
And how do we stop it, I guess?
I don't know that you need to stop it.
Yeah. While owners. I think, I think as soon as you have anybody parking in the handicap spaces right there, it's going to also kind of deter people from.
Well, there'd be always be a hatched area where nobody parks.
Yeah.
Which.
Yeah.
But.
Right. Yeah, I guess, um, there's. Yeah, I don't know, that's a tough question to answer, I guess, because.
Baby stroller there or something?
I mean. Because people could probably cut across almost at any property, um, at any point, it's tough to. It's tough when we get, when we attempt to try to really control people, but we're at this point trying to encourage them to go one way. I don't know, but there might be potential for maybe some other. Garden space or plantings or something up in that area that might help, yeah, might help deter that kind of cut through traffic.
I think we talked a little bit about this in September, but is that, are those reserved spots going to be city space then? Like the city would do snow removal and land and landscaping, or is that going to be Paul Moore's?
The, the ADA cells you're talking, uh, I mean, we, that we just got the report back this last week, so we still need to, I, I'm waiting. I'm, um, probably waiting for Troy to set up another meeting for, to follow up with Paul. So we haven't had any additional discussion with him about that. That would be. I know it was sort of the status of the discussion that Paul haven't changed since September, so, uh, if that answers that for you.
I just think, do you have an assumption about what that would be? That would be city?
Uh, I mean, I think it would make the most sense for the city that it's, that it's private. And that we would do some sort of land swap with Paul, since we have to acquire right of way on the, on the west side, so like. Typically for a city and you would think for a property owner, it would make sense if they own both those properties to. Take some from one and then give back on the other, especially since it's going to be a park, parking lot. Add to that private property. Uh, in our last meeting, Paul did mention that he wasn't necessarily like. Looking for that, but he was willing to give up some of the west property for the right of way and, and work to be done. Um, especially when he was wanting that left turn lane, so. Um, so I'm not really certain, I guess, which way. He'll lean when we start having additional discussion. But I think for the city to simplify things, it would make the most sense if we could get the right of way set up, that it's just the parking lot would be cleared by, by Paul's. Since they're clearing the rest of the parking lot probably at the same time, so. Guess that would be cleanest, so. Okay, is there anything else? I'll move on to. Just briefly touch the, the last update I got on the brick pavers on Gulfview Avenue is that they might, they might begin work early next week, which the weather is looking a little bit warmer, so. Hopefully that's able to happen. If the weather turns really bad, it might have to wait till next season. And then the George Street cul-de-sac, uh, so the works complete on the cul-de-sac, uh, there's additional detail in the report there, but. Ultimately, uh, Lynch's has, has completed their. Contractual obligations to install, uh, two new intakes, repave the street, receive that area. And, uh, we have, um. Resolution. Tonight.
Twenty-four, forty-six.
Yep, and so this is for. A resolution certifying completion of the work on George Street repairs project and accepting and approving the work of Lynch's excavating. Uh, and so this would also release the retainage, so this would be a final invoice payment. Of six thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents, which was what. John is talking about adding to the warrants list, so that's the value that's, that would still needs to be paid, paid to finalize this project.
So motion resolution twenty-four, forty-six is for the council. Do you want to make a motion, Doug? Motion by Doug, is there a second? Second by Nick? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Swales.
Aye.
Gunn.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Anything else, Ryan? Any questions for Ryan or Doug? Doug, do you want to add anything?
Um, do you have a look at that light tonight down on Nigger?
Uh, it's lit up. I mean, yeah, uh, it looks like maybe it's not quite as bright as some others, but it's, it looks like a newer LED style light, so.
Mid am tomorrow?
What's that?
Get a hold of mid am tomorrow, say that light's not quite working.
Um, yeah, I guess, uh, I was going to check with you about what the concern or complaint exactly was and then.
Sounds like it was an email, sounds like it was just not working at all.
Not working, okay. Okay, when I drove up tonight, it was, it seemed like it was working, so.
It was a little bit limber by. Hospital, not on, yeah.
Okay. I'll, I can ask him, yeah, to investigate and see if it's, um. Maybe it's got a.
It's all, do you?
Yeah, photos, so it's not working right or something.
Very good.
Okay, we'll go on to building zoning and sanitation. Do you have anything, Tim?
No, but I have a fun fact from Think Iowa City, they're working on their ninth high school championship that they bring to. The, our community, not directly, but surrounding, so all of that filters into income here in University Heights. But. Eight of them in, working on the ninth, they're doing it on a real good, I mean, streak, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim? We'll go to eGovernment. Lisa sent around a written report. Any questions for her?
No.
You're good?
I'll leave a Christmas tree pickup. You got two dates, January seventh and fourteenth, so please don't put them out on the thirty-first and have them sit there for a week and get buried in snow.
Okay.
Did everyone get their leaves picked up? Has anybody heard of any, anybody getting neglected this year?
Hey, good. They're all picked up, but I added, they have any bags afterward.
Yeah, yeah.
Were they Johnson County refuse bags?
They were the right bags.
Okay, uh, any questions for Lisa? Any announcements?
I do have one. I forgot to mention in ours, I should have, John, um, city examination is scheduled for December nineteenth with Cronlogi and Olson, who we have contracted now to do for the next five years. So John and I will be working with John Olson and. Jeff, is that the other guy? I can't think what his name is. Anyway, we've got that scheduled for the nineteenth. So.
Any other announcements? Uh, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone. Happy holidays and go Hawks.